Good night, everyone. For some of us, a couple of weeks now, you've been hearing me asking for prayer for Becky Jackson. She is actually my stepmom. She's my father's wife, a beautiful, beautiful soul. She has, she developed breathing problems from, she was very young. And for a couple of years now, she has to be, she had to be bringing around an oxygen tank with her, because you know, it has gotten, it got worse. And she even has a nice service dog. She did a surgery a week ago, about a week ago, and the surgery went well. However, a couple of days after she returned home, she kind of began to sleep away, sleep away. So it seems like the anesthesiologist, or you know that term, it was, I don't know, it's not like it was too strong, because all the components in regard to her BMI and everything was correct, but you know, our bodies react differently. So she had to go back and they had to induce, they had to do intubation to help revitalize all the organs and practically put her in a coma. So you know, kind of, that was scary to my dad, my big Superman dad, that you know, would call, but we'd always pray together and you know, I think it's the third week now, the church has been praying, her church, her family, everybody has been praying. And usually, when you're in a coma, it's about months, sometimes it can take a very long time. But I'm thinking, within the space of five days, they could be able to start taking off some of the wires off her. She's conscious, she was conscious, they could hear her. So my dad mentioned to her that boy, nothing going right in the house, because she not there. So she gave a little eyebrow funny nudge that she usually does, you know, to show that, you know, she is hearing what he's saying and so on. And two days ago, they actually woke her up. You know, she was in her health, was in good stance for her to be awakened. And now she, she's not taking meds or food through tubes anymore. She's actually eating as of this morning. So I, we are all, you know, giving thanks, like so much thanks for that. And you know, just to share that, we come together and we pray and we believe, and there is power in the Word of the Lord.
Amen, amen. Hallelujah. And I know I've been experiencing that, because I've been there. So I've been experiencing that with Monica, and I've seen the miracle that is being worked on her. So we give thanks for that. Before I hand over to Sister, to Minister Dorma, I want to leave a little word of encouragement with us. Philippians 4 verse 6 and 7. Be careful for nothing, but in everything by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving. Let your requests be known, be made known unto God. And the peace of God, which passeth all understanding, shall keep your hearts and mind through Christ Jesus. So I want to say to everybody, let us cast our burdens, our fears, all the things that we worry about, let us cast them on Jesus. Sometime we cast them on each other, we throw them at each other, and it causes a lot of friction. But let us go to God in prayer, leave them there, and have faith and trust that He will deliver, and His words are true. It's difficult sometime to say, "Don't worry," because we are human beings. But in worrying, let us still be conscious enough to leave them at the feet of Jesus, and don't worry to the extent that we beat up each other. So I pray, Lord, to God, that we will seek Him, especially when we don't understand what's happening, we will always seek Him and trust that He knows best. So I give the Lord thanks for everything, thank Him for what He's going to do tonight, and I hand over to our minister Dorma.
Good night. Thank you, Brother Robert. I just wanna thank God for everything. You may be seated. Good night to the persons who are online. I just want you to join me in prayer. And a lot of time we pray, and we are so, and we are grateful to the Lord for hands in the prayer, but we seldom say so. And, and we just take it for granted by rite of passage, sir. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a rite of passage. God, do you answer the prayer? That's what you're supposed to do. You understand, is that sort of way? So just tonight, we just wanna give God thanks, some thanks. So Lord, we thank you. We thank you that you're our God. Faithful, faithful, faithful are you, mighty God. There is none to compare with you. You are the only true God. Lord, we thank you that we can carry our burdens to you, and you hear and you answer. We thank you for every answered prayer, mighty God, those that have been manifested, and those that have been manifested, and those that have come, mighty God. Answers are on their way, Father. And we are not confident in you, that mighty God, sometime we pray, and we have not even looked at the answers as they come, mighty God, because we are so confident in you, and mighty God will take it for granted. And so, God, we ask you for forgiveness. Lord, we thank you for your love for us, and your mercies, mighty God. We thank you for your grace, mighty God. Lord, we thank you, Father, for your keeping care. We thank you for healing. We thank you for deliverance. We thank you for provision. Lord, we do not want to take anything for granted. We thank you for the hair that we breathe. Oh, God, we are forever grateful. And so this night, mighty God, we bow before your worship, and we say, "Thank you, Lord, thank you, because you have been a good and faithful God." Thank you, Lord, because you answer prayer. Thank you, Lord, because you are true to your word, and you never go back on it. And so, God, we thank you, and thank you for your love, mighty God, that permeates our heart. Thank you for the love, Father, that sometime when we feel like we're alone, you wrap your arms around us, Father, and you fill our hearts with love. And so, God, we thank you. We give you all the praise, the grief, all the glory. And tonight, mighty God, as we come to look in your Word, we pray even now, Father, that your Holy Spirit will attend to it, Father. That mighty God will not miss anything that is important tonight, mighty God. That every word that is spoken by you, mighty God, will resonate in our heart, Father. That mighty God, as we examine these words, Father, cause them to come alive in our spirit, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen, amen. I know some of you might be saying, "Oh, they are in person tonight." And, and you might feel a little bad, because you're not here. But if you're online, good night, and we are happy to have you. All right, today, tonight, we are going back to the book of Galatians, and we are from chapter 4. But by, 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 I just want to do a brief recap, not a big, long recap, because I don't recap. The book of Galatians is written to the, to the Galatian Gentiles, Gentile Christian people. They're not Jewish, they're Gentile. Some of them may be Jewish, but the majority is Gentile. And so, the essence of the book of Galatians is that the children, the church was now taken on Judaism, and the trappings of Judaism as if to say, what was done on the cross was not enough, and the teaching that Paul had given them was not enough. And so, Paul is angry. But although he's angry, we'll find that he is still tempering that anger with love. Because it is the love that drives him to this correction, to this place of correctiveness. So he's trying to correct them in their error, to ensure that they don't go down the slippery slope, so to speak. So here we go now. So I'm going to back up to chapter 3, and I'm going to read from verse 24. We have another mic, Krista? Okay, I'm going to have to ask. So I'm going to read from verse, from chapter 3, from verse 24. Not verse 24. Well, I'm here. Oh, yeah. So I'm going to read from verse 24, and it says, "So the law was put in charge to lead us to Christ, that we may, that we may be justified by faith. Now that faith has come, we are no longer under the supervision of the law. You all are sons of God through faith in Christ Jesus. For all of you who were baptized into Christ have clothed yourselves with Christ. There is neither Jew nor Greek, slave nor free, male nor female, for you are all one in Christ Jesus. If you belong to Christ, then you are Abraham's seed, here according to the promise." Chapter 4, and I'm going to read from verse 1 to 7, and then somebody else is going to read up to verse 12 for me, and we are going to pause. And then we are going to look at that scripture, because we are going to be looking at grace, here, and slave, spirit and flesh. That is what we're going to look at this week. Grace, here and slave, H-E-I-R, and slave, spirit and flesh, all right? So what I am saying is that as long as the heir is a child, he is no different from a slave. Although he owns the whole estate, he's subject to guardian and trustees until his, until his, until the time set by his father. So also, when we are children, we are in slavery under the basic principles of the world. But when we, when the time has fully come, God sent his son, born of a woman, born under the law, to redeem those under the law, that we might receive the full reign of son, or the full rights of son. Because you are a son, God has sent his spirit, sent the spirit of the son unto our heart, the spirit who calls out Abba Father. So you are no longer a slave, but a son. And since you are a son, God has made you also an heir. Somebody. Verse 8 to 12.
Verse 8 to which one?
12.
To 12. King James Version. "Howbeit then, when he knew not God, he did service unto them, which by nature are no gods. But now, or rather, are known of God, how turn ye again to the weak and beggarly elements, where unto ye desire again to be shovelled. Ye serve with it, and most of them are. And I'm afraid of Jesus, and as I have been told upon me laboring in his name. Reverend, I beseech you, be as I am, for I am as far. Ye have not injured me at all."
Praise God. We pause, we pausing, because we're going to, we're going to look, we're going to look at the privilege of being, of being called, the privilege of calling God Abba Father. It says in verse, in, in chapter 1 of, sorry, in verse 1 of chapter 4. Says, "As long as you're an heir, you're a child, because you have not yet come into your inheritance, so you are a child." If once you, because, once you come into your inheritance, you're an adult. By law, even in Jamaica, by law, you cannot inherit certain properties or certain rights until they are of a certain age. And therefore, when, when he's, when he's trying to explain to them, he's trying to be patient, you know? He really get explosive, so now his scat are cooling down now, so I'm saying, explaining to them. The nitty gritty of why you don't need to be, why, why you don't need to return to slavery, so to speak. So he's saying to them, "Listen to me. Even when you are a child, with enough money, your parents has given you a trust fund, and you have enough money in the bank, but as long as you remain a child, you're going to be as good as a slave, because somebody is going to be set over you. So you are, you are now moving from that, is explaining to them in terms that they can understand, the property inheritance law, oh, you come to inheriting, so we want to bring you into that relationship for you to understand." So he's, he's now explaining to them in terms that they can understand. But he want them to understand that you don't have to stay bound to the law, because as long as the law is your guardian, you're still a child. You need to grow up. And Christian growth is not measured by years. It's measured by how we accept the Word of God, and how, what we do with it. Because some people have been in Christ for donkey years, as we say in Jamaica, and they're still not the understanding of what Christ has done for them. So they're lack spiritual maturity. So Christianity is not measured by, by, by the amount of years you have been, you have been baptized, or you have come to know Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. Liberation is important, because it's, if you're not, if you're, if you're not, if you're not, um, if you're not, the principle of the world is that if you are not, if you're not born into sonship, then you're a slave. And in, 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 in those times that Paul is writing to the Galatians, the whole idea of being a slave is not foreign to them. Because people, affluent families had slaves. And how, how that went was that if you were a slave, and you have children in the, in the household of your master, your children would not be free. Your children automatically be a slave. And it comes, we're gonna see that towards the end of the chapter, being emphasized more so. But Paul move out to see, to talk about the liberation, the liberation from, from, from being, just from being here to being, to move it into being the son, a prized son. It says, the New International Version says, to go back up to verse 4, "When the time has fully come, God sent his son, born of a woman, born under the law, verse 5, "to redeem those under the law, that we might receive the full rights of son." So you're moving from the bond, from being bond, being bond servant under the law, to the full right of being a son. But even when you're a son, you still have restriction, right? And it says, "When we receive the adoption of sonship," and the adoption of sonship is very important, you know? Because Paul, now Paul, Jesus says, if you are not a, um, a lot of us, well, when we were, when we were not in Christ, where this, our Father was the, the, the Father of lies. And if we are, if we are, if we are the child of the person who is the Father of lies, right? It tells us that we need to be born into this family. And it is not something that you're born into, like the Reynolds here have their children, and they are having a Christian household. It's not good enough to be just to be born into this household. Jesus said to Nicodemus in chapter 3, verse 6, said, "You must be born," John, chapter 3, verse 6. You must be born again. Can I go for, let me go for it, and I'll look for it. You must, you must be born of the Spirit, and the water and the blood. But verse 6 says, "That which is born of the flesh is flesh, and that which is born of the Spirit is Spirit." That means there is a new birth that is beyond, that is beyond flesh. So not because you're born into the Reynolds household, is a Christian household, that don't make you a Christian. Because you're born of the flesh into the Reynolds household. You don't need to be born of the Spirit into the household of Christ. That is going to make you the Son of Christ. And that is where we can now become Abba Father. And I, I want us to look at how Jesus declares the Abba Father thing. When, when he was on the cross, he said, "Father, I commit myself to you. I'm coming back to you." He was declaring that he was coming back to Christ, to the Father, because he wanted to ensure that, that the Father emphasis was on. And when you say Father, Father is like us having an intimate name for our own Father. You can't say, "He's your father." But when you say Abba, it's like some children call them father, dada. Some people, children call them father, daddy. So this intimacy, that when he says, "When you cry unto the Father," you can now, you now declare, you can now say, "Abba Father," because you are born of the Spirit. If he, Galatians, Galatians 4, verse 6, "Because you are a son, God sent the spirit of the son into our heart, the spirit who calls out, 'Abba Father, Abba Father.'" And you notice he calls out, he didn't say whisper, cry out, when you're, when you're depressed, when you're, when you're in anguish, you call out, "Abba Father." It is not something that is going to be whispered, that is only when you're, all when you're excited. It's, it's, it's that spirit of intimacy, that, that, that relational spirit that you can relate to. And you're born out, "Abba Father." Because when Jesus was on the cross, he, he, he cried out, and it was, it was not a pretty cry, because you're in physical pain, emotional anguish. And therefore, when he said, "Abba Father," and that is Mark 14, verse 36. So you can, you can take note, people are taking note. But I want us to understand the grace of God that brings us into this relationship. It was not, it is not, it is not just, it's not an ordinary relationship. And therefore, sometime we, we think, we, we, we think, we take it for granted. And I, I, when I was doing my research, the name John Newton came up, and if anybody know of John Newton, he wrote this amazing grace, how sweet a song, that saved a rich like me. He was a slave owner, a slave trader. And one night, he buck up God upon the seas. Have a call, he said, buck up God upon the seas. And when he ran into God, and him saw how depraved he was, he wrote that song. And a lot of time, people say, um, you know, I like music, because it have a message. I like most music, has to have a message. It has, and, and, and John Newton poured his heart out, so it, it, it was, he found himself at the mercy seat, and I can't understand him saying, "Amazing grace," because when you get to that point where you can't see God for yourself. And while I was, while I was doing my research, it became, I understand that, I, and I looked into it. See, you know, some, you have to do some things, you go down a deep rabbit hole. You ever, you ever, you ever, the research, that you intend, and you have to pull yourself back? I'm looking at how John Newton would have been brought up thinking that this was the best thing. It was a way of making money. There was a way to make him rich. It was, it was, he must have, they said he was on the sea from almost seven year old. This was, he learnt, said, he learnt slavery. But when he found Jesus, he understand freedom. Freedom that goes beyond money, freedom that goes beyond classism and racism, and all sorts of other is him. But as it says, as it says, it was a place where the world, away from all the world system order, the world, what the world system give. And therefore, freedom was something that he understood. Then it says, we have moved beyond from just son to, from, from, from slave to son. And, and it says, "You are here through Christ, no longer a slave." That's a seven. So you are no longer a slave, but a son. Since you are a son, God has made you also an heir. And, and when you think of you being an heir, you can imagine your inheritance. Because even though, when you're not, when you're a heir, you have something to inherit, you know? And you imagine your inheritance in Christ, God has made you an, an, an heir. You're a slave, it says in, in verse 8, "You're a slave, and now you are, you're, you're, you're no longer a slave. You're a son." So God has something in store for you. You can imagine you being a slave. And a lot of time, we may say, "We are not a slave, because we're born free in Jamaica." But we're a slave to so many things. We're slave to, to, to our jobs. We're slave to relationships, some of them so unhealthy that we, we need not even think about it. We're slave to materialism. We have all sorts of idols that we don't even know that we have them. We, we become slave to even to the religion. And I don't want anybody to think that I am, when I say slave to religion, we might be here in church, you know? And we are so taken up from the minute, from praise and worship to the benediction, but we don't have the relationship. So we're slave to the ritual. So we come here every, whenever we come here, and we go through the motions, because we are a slave to it. But we don't have the, 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 this, this, this son experience, the relational experience. So we know that we come on a Sunday morning, and we start with, with a prayer, and we do praise and worship, and we get into praise and worship, but we're not experiencing God for ourselves. So it is, it is a ritual. We don't have connectivity with God, to God. We just go through the motion, so we, 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 we go, we have crisis. We always are going to have crisis, because it is not relational. So if something don't go right this morning, if, if God help, help with, if one of the person, their prayers and worship team ever sing half key, we spend, so the whole rest of our service are criticizing them in a way mine. They're gonna sing better. Oh, say they're gonna sing better. And we go on, 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 on. So we, 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 we come to church. So we, 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 we come to church, but we are slave to the program. Let, heaven forbid that, 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 right after praise and worship, pastor getting the name spirit, say he must, he must say the word. And we don't pray about, we don't take the intercessory prayer, we just run into the, the word. Some of us would be half or rockers in the church in the morning, wouldn't hear a thing, because we're slave to the program. So we go on now, moving forward. So, we are now at verse, verse, verse nine now. But now that you know that God, or rather, you are known by God, which I said relational, how is it that you are turning back to those weak and miserable principles? Weak and miserable principles. Do you wish to be enslaved by them all again, all over again? Verse ten, you are observing days and months and seasons and years. I fear for you, that somehow I've wasted my effort on you. So Paul had taught, taught these people, and I, and I, and I'm not sure when he, um, the period of his teaching. It's a relationship that would have lasted quite a few years. I'm looking for my note, where I had, yes, my timeline. Between, between Paul first visit to, 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 to the, um, the region of Galatia, Galatea. And his last visit, it spans roughly a nine year period. And the first visit, he's, he spent approximately three years in that region. And on the second visit, he spent approximately five years in that region. He was out of the region when he was writing the letter. And having done so much work with these nice people, it would have pain his heart. Because he would have spent so much time to sit down and reason with them about, about Christ and the work of the, of, of what, of the cross. And he would have spent all his time, because he would have had intimate relationship with, 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 with the legal system, so to speak. Because he was the, he was the one who, who allowed Stephen to be stoned. He gave consent for Stephen to be stoned, and I think that is found in Acts eight somewhere. Um, he gave consent for, for Stephen to be stoned. So intimately aware of the, 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 the pitfalls, so to speak, of the, of, 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 of the law. Because when you pursue the law, you can't, you can't be zealous in pursuing the law, you know? And when you pursue the law and you're zealous, sometimes you're, you're dead wrong, or do what you think is right. So he wa- Paul, Paul understood, because by the grace of God, he was able to pull back from that. And having pulled back from that, he was now, he had come now into this region where he's now teaching the people. Said of taught them about the pitfalls of the law. Because based on his own experience, as somebody who was so learned and so strict and so, he was a Pharisee like no other Pharisees. He was tidying, he was observing him day, he was observing festival, he was eating the right food. And he came to understand that all of that is just a schoolmaster, is just a enslavement. So you keep your in the right, in a position where you might always, you might think you're right, but you're wrong. So he wanted them to understand that zeal misplaced, zeal is dangerous. So you don't have to go back to that, don't get back into this miserable lifestyle, where you, where, where your, where your efforts is all about the day, the month, the year. Same question, have I wasted my time on you? Was all that I did was, was it futile? Because now you are, you are taking, you are taking on trappings. When I was much, when I was younger, I like that word younger, when I was younger and we went to church. The church that I used to go to, you see? You see all me wearing braids? Trust me, none of that couldn't go through the door. Somebody will be in the spirit at the door waiting on me. And, and, and as I grow older, and those are some of the things that we, and, and by the way, my skirt would have been too short tonight too. Um, it would have to be way down there so too. And I'm explaining to you, so my time we take on these things that don't help our spiritual walk. And I say, we must come to church with the skirt up our way, up our way, up our mid thigh, and, 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 and with chest exposed and, and, and all of those things. We're not, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that some of the things that we take on to ourselves in Christendom is unnecessary. Unnecessary. So Paul asks the brethren, have I wasted my effort on you? Such verse twelve, I plead with you brothers, become more like me, for I become like you. You have done me no wrong. And we will read again. Anybody else would like to read from, um, verse thirteen to verse twenty, verse thirteen to twenty, reader please.
Alright, I'm reading from the King James Version.
Okay.
You know how through
Praise God. What is Paul saying to, to, to them now? Paul, take it personally, it is now personal. Him feel, him feel, him begin to, him begin to, him begin to said, it, it started out to say, oh, you, oh, you, oh, you, you rebelling against what was taught to you. But he started talking about it personally, he said, I plead with you, back up to verse twelve. I would plead with you, my brother, to become more like me, for I became like you. That means say, him come down to your level. He came down to the level that you were at, that you were, you were children, not knowing anything. So he came down to that level, so he wanted to understand, he came to you as a child. He said, when I first preached to you the gospel, he came, when he was first there, he, he was even sick. And, 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 um, in, in, in Acts, chapter fourteen, I think it is. It records Paul being, yeah, came under attack while he was in the southern section of, um, um, Galatera. He, he came under attack and they, they beat him up, beat him. And chances are, he was, he was making reference to that, he'm sick, battered and bruised. I don't know the nature of the sickness, but he says here, he says, my illness was a trial to you. But he is, is, is remembering how they treated him. He said, they never treat me bad, wanna love me, wanna take care of me, chances are they had to hide him. So he's reminding them of the relationship that they had at the beginning of, 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 of this church. How you take care of me, how you nurture me, or you, or, or you, the love was so great that he says, that if you could take out your eye and give me, you'd only give it to me. So I don't know if Paul, if, if Paul hide this well up, you know, so now you get beaten, now you can't sort it, you're too high then? Well, I don't know what it is, but I've seen, I've heard about it, people get beat up and then can't sort it, they're too high. But can you imagine, Paul was so healed that he said, he said, I appreciated you. Maybe that's why I spent, spent all of three years there on the first visit and five years at the second, because the love was so strong, that what bound him to them. And he's, and he said, I appreciate you, right? You never treat me scorn or contempt. He said, you treat me like me did, I was an angel of God, you recognize me. So I'm wondering, when I, when he said treated as he was an angel of God, I, I thought about maybe it could have been, maybe his second visit, because them, because I, that's my thought. And I couldn't find it nowhere to prove which visit to us. Um, because he said, he said, you treated me as if I was an angel of God. That means say, you wanted to hear from me, you respected my, 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 my spiritual authority. You saw me as a mouthpiece for God. So all of a sudden, we become enemy. Because I'm telling you the truth. Jesus said the truth shall be on the friends. All of a sudden, you become a enemy, become a tell you the truth. So you don't like truth. You want to return to legalism. You don't want to hear that what you're taking on is foolishness. But verse seventeen, those people are zealous to win you over, but not for good. Yes, brother, you have to use the mic, brother, guy man, you're not working, alright, go ahead. Hold on there, hold on there, uh, uh, in light of, how many people up online? In light of those persons, I want you to talk into the mic.
Yes, I was saying before, that I didn't get it here, that, that Paul was speaking the truth in offense. Because more often, sometimes we, we, we use the saying that you're speaking the truth. But the scripture also says, we must speak the truth in love. Say, Paul here speaking to the brethren, saying to them, now how we becomes enemy, since you're speaking, since I am saying the truth to you. What I am highlighting here is for we not to misunderstood believing that the truth can speak in any and any way, because it is the truth. You must take into consideration that what you're saying, even though it is the truth, it can be embarrassing and disgraceful to the person.
Alright, when Paul is writing this letter, he would have gotten a report out of, um, Galatia, that the people had returned to Judaism. And so, when he's writing this letter, they are not responding to him, but he is responding to what was happening at the time. So he is responding to the fact that they, they, they were doing what they were doing. And so his response to them is that, by this time, I see, so they, they may badmouth him. Yeah, so, so he, he, he's saying to them that, the truth is that you badmouthing me is only because me telling you the truth. So yes, it's an offense, so at this, by this time, him, 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 him get militant. Because he, he, but he is, it, it, it's like when, it's like when you, you, you run for a while, you cool down a little bit. So him, 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 he got, got in the, 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 the cooling zone now. So he is cooling down in, in his, in his, in his, he, he, he has written this letter, maybe he had dictated it, maybe him write it with him own, and I don't know. But him writing and him, and him reach the point where him, 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 him reasoning it out and him set it with them, say, alright. Me love you, just like how you did love me, you show me love, me love you, me love you to the point that don't want you to understand the truth, isn't it, so if me tell you the truth, is that an offense, me becoming enemy? Alright, the, the, the guy man was saying that, um, but he was saying that the, the, the Bible sometimes is taken out of context, because it relates to the Jesus only and the Adventists, and that is common, and that is common. And therefore, we, we have to understand that, just like what they are praying for us, we need to pray for them, that they, they, they have, the eyes, the eyes of their understanding be open. You understand? That's how the word declare it, Paul says, the eyes of your understanding may be open. So we want to pray that the eyes of their understanding may be open, because they are zealous, you know? Them, them, them have great zeal. And they clearing them, them new day and them festival and them month and them year, them have great zeal, they do it with such vigor. Who's zealous more than you ever witness them? When them come out, them flood the whole area, two side of the street. Or when you look up the road, down the road, this pier, you ever witness this upon your street, regardless how long your street is, then decide say, alright, the street has forty houses, we are going to have ten each. And so them start from this side, this side, this side, and then flood the street. Zealous, organized, and so their, their intent is to go after you. And so Paul is saying, guard yourself against that. Those people are zealous to win you over, but not for good. They want to alienate you from the truth, from us, so that they may, so that you may be zealous for them. It's not for Christ them want you to be zealous for, it's for them religion. It's for the, it, it, it's more like, it's that, it's not, it's not to, to ensure that Christ is seen in you, they want you slave to the religion. Right? So they want you slave to a day, a month, a year, whatever it is. Whether, whether you be baptized in Jesus' name, our Father, Son and Holy Ghost, and then nitpick at that. Right? So whatever the trappings are, Paul is warning them. He said, it is good to be zealous, but you must be zealous after the writing. Verse nineteen, my dear children, for whom I am again in pains of childbirth, until Christ is formed in you. And when I hear the pains of childbirth, what I thought about Paul being a man. May have to get it from a man perspective, but, um, pains of childbirth. When I thought, when I think about it, Rev. Guyman and Robert, as many in here and young renals. When I think about pain of childbirth as a man. When I think about pain of childbirth as a man. I, and he says, he, he, he is in the throes of childbirth. And Monique would have gone on that road three times. And so she would have had the experience of childbirth. And each time is different, right, Sister Monique? And I think about the, 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 the whole thought of childbirth. And I'm thinking about the, the period in which Paul is writing, it's not in the age of ultrasound. And, 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 and hospitals. The, the, when he's thinking of childbirth, he's thinking about all the risks that come with childbirth. He's thinking about a breach. He's thinking about, um, long labor hours. He's thinking about the fact that you are supposed to be, be, be secluded and, and, um, um, put in, how, how, how home or wherever you have been put in, and you have been held in darkness in there. So he has gone through that with you. He has experienced the agony, the anticipation, the, 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 the uncertainty of what is going, what the outcome is going to be. Right? And, 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 and I have two children in two different era. One, one knew what the child was going to be before it was born because the era was, was ultrasound era. The next one before ultrasound was so prevalent, they do ultrasound, but they not, they, they don't look for, they was, they just look for see if the child was okay. Right? And, and, and then there was the era that came before me, the era in which I was born in. My mother had a choice of hospital and, and home birth, so I'm a home birth child. And it must have been different. Because it, it is not a fancy thing. It's a tough undergoing, it's painful. It's back ache, it's belly ache, it's nausea. So Paul is saying, he's going through this pain of childbirth. So he's going through the, all the ups, the downs, the uncertainty. The trepidation, where they don't know if it's going to burn a breach or it is going to be breach or it's going to come out straight. And when the child finally born, I always say, oh, praise God. We walk, we higher, we start putting fingers and toes, right, Sister Monique, I say, go. We start putting fingers and toes and, 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 and check head and, and check all sorts of other things. I will start to look because there's not much we can do because it already come. So Paul is saying to, he's saying, I've gone through that with you, to say Christ born in you. So I've, I've had anxiety, the nausea, the, the painful experience, the pain, hours of pain. Uncomfortable sitting position, uncomfortable standing position. I've gone through all that with you, to ensure that Christ was birthed in you. I was not trying to birth not flesh, I was trying to birth some spirit in you. So, so he moving to that place where he, where he come to the understanding that he was looking for something that was more, was more lasting than what you had. Because flesh will come out with imperfection, but spirit now will come out with no imperfection. Says one, he said, I wish to form Christ in you. So the, 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 the NIV says, he wished to form Christ in you. So it is not a, it is not, it, it is not a, it's not a quick, quick situation. Because when, when a child is formed, the child takes nine months or a normal child before the child make an appearance. So he, he was willing to sit down, that is why discipleship is important, you know? So that you, 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 you sit down and you form Christ in the, in the person. He, the development process and then each stage of development is different. And it, and it's an individual thing. Because Sister Monique may, may, may crave salt fish, and I may have nausea for when it come to salt fish. But the important thing is to develop the, 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 the Christ in the person. So you're going to have to go, it's an individual thing. So he will say, I, we did it as an individual basis, to form Christ in you, it was a long and arduous process. It was painful. And to birth Christ in you and finally you come out, you are a Christian. Saying, now you'll just get saved and we leave you. We nurture you. And now you have, you are, you, 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 you have been birthed as a Christian and all of a sudden.
Spiritual, because, we say, could it be that it is a problem from them time, the Western face, no? Because for me, I believe that if we united as a Christian more, what we are teaching would have more embedded. But because Adventists is teaching this, Jesus only is teaching this, and, and, and we, the Pentecostal is teaching this. Say, as Paul used some very strong metaphor by explaining, when him go as far as saying that either even pluck out your eye and give me. To the way, oh, much you love me, and know that I'm saying the truth to you. Now I am telling the whole, um, doctrine of Christ and what Christ represents and not just this whole religiosity we all go through. Where you think that this is what Christ is representing. Could it be that it's the same thing we're having now? Because I remember one time in this Bible study, a question was asked, um, if it is that we could show hands if we know that we are saved. And even in our church today, people have a problem with that, sticking up them hand can talk without a shadow of a doubt that, yes, I am saved. And it is because of the different, different doctrine that is going around, we all listen to. Because sometimes with there own some Adventist, with there own some Jesus only. After church on Sunday, me and Barra went fishing and some people come to baptize. And just by listening to them, I realized they are Jesus only. Because nothing was mentioned after the person, um, repeat them testimony. And the pastor said, we baptizing the, the name of our father, the son and the holy, nothing, everything was mentioned was Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. I'm saying, based on the fact that we are having doubts in our midst, if that is what could have contributed to we not being strong Christian in what we believe and what we represent.
That has a contributing factor, but also the fact that we have not been grounded in the Word. The, I think the most important thing is that we need to be grounded in the Word and allow the Holy Spirit to be our teacher. And, 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 and I, I, I like what James says, if you lack wisdom, ask God. He get enough, enough and plenty and he won't quarrel about it. That's my translation. Enough, enough and plenty and he won't, he won't, he won't, he won't berate you about it. He won't call you a fool, fool. He won't say you're idiot, me not say that already. He won't say that. And, and, and therefore, a, a lot of persons don't understand that, certain, as a Christian, I can, to, to me, I listen to all sorts of foolishness. Me listen all sorts of foolishness, because I want to hear what the foolishness is about. But when I was younger, when I was younger in Christ, not younger as a, in, in age, when I was younger in Christ, I never had the patience, God never allowed me to have the patience to listen to it. It used to build a little anger in my spirit, every time I saw, yeah, foolishness, me used to switch. Because there was an anger in my spirit, the Lord, the Lord shield me from the foolishness, so to speak. The, the, so every time I, 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 I would hear it, I get a little angry. So I'd switch. But now I am able to listen and, and to learn and to hear what other persons are saying. Because God has brought me to that place of maturity where I, I can now listen to other people. So I'd be able to say, to say how it is impacting other persons. I listen to a particular radio station and them full of a foolishness. But them have, them have some good teachings. But them full of a foolishness still, you know? And I would not recommend a radio station to know young Christian pastor. Me, me, I, me would not do not young Christian in the, in the faith because they be so distracted and confused. By the end of, by the end of one morning of listening to them. Yeah. Yeah, because that is why the Lord allow you to hear what you need to hear. And sometimes we, we, we get impatient. We get impatient with each other. And, and I, I underline it somewhere in my Bible since then, you know? Um, because, because we so, we, we so, we so, um, we so caught up in trying to fix other people that we don't allow Christ to fix us. And that is, that, that is where the impatience comes in. Alright. Moving right along, moving right along. So he says, verse twenty. How I wish I could be with you now and, and change your tone because I am perplexed about you. So you, you realize that Paul was not there when he, when he, when he sent this letter. Instead, he wishing could have come back and talked to you. To reason with you, to change your argument, to ensure that you get a better understanding. Because he's, 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 having spent so much time, you can't imagine how, how heartbroken he would have been. Having spent so much time and invested his time and his energy with them and his, and his love. And he really think the people him love him and he really think the people him love God, but he saw that they were being derailed. It's like, it's, it's, it's that they were being derailed, derailed because of their love for, and by the way, the people were zealous, he said, he said these people are zealous, the people didn't love God. So they wanted more of God, but what they were taking on is more, more of religion than more of God. And so he said, I wish I could come, come change your tone. Cause, um, change how you think, change how you talk. Because now, now I begin to doubt where you stand. Now I begin to wonder if you're, you're, you're still a Christian. Now I begin to wonder if you're not move too far from, from the goalpost, so to speak. So I would have liked, I, I wish I was there. But after this letter was, would have been read, I pray that the, the people of Galatia. And I, I note that they were at one of the seven churches that was written to, um, in Revelation, the angel of the Lord did not send any message to them. So I, I assume that they would have found their way. Somebody read for me now, um, from verse twenty-one to thirty-one. You want to read, Guy man? Sister Phil, you want to read?
Chapter four. Tell me. You who want to be under the law. Don't you hear the law? For it is written that Abraham, who had two sons, one by a slave and the other by a free woman. But the one by the slave was born as a result of the flesh, while the one of the free woman was born through promise. These things are being taken figuratively. For the woman represents two, for the women represent two covenants. One is from Mount Sinai and bears children into slavery. This is Hagar. Now Hagar represent Mount Sinai in Arabia and corresponds to the present Jerusalem. For she is in slavery with her children. But the Jerusalem above is free and she is our mother. For it is written, rejoice, childless woman, unable to give birth, burst into song and shout, you who are not in labor. For the children of the desolate woman will be many more, will be many more numerous than those of the woman who has a husband. Now to you, brothers and sisters, like Isaac are children of promise. But just as then the child born as a result of the fle- flesh persecuted the one born as a result of the spirit, so also now. But what does the spirit say? Drive out the slave and her son, for the son of the slave will never be cohere with the son of the free woman. Therefore, brothers and sisters, we are not children of a slave, but children of the free woman.
Praise God. Well, this is a comparison. This is a, it's not a parrot. Cause we know of Hagar and we know of Sarah, right? And you can go back and read Genesis sixteen in your own time. But I give you a synopsis, give you a summary. And it's important for us to understand what, 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 what Paul is trying to put across here. It's so important that he has used two women who was well known to the, to, 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 to that peep, that set of people. To the persons he was writing the letter, they know of Hagar, they know of Sarah. Hagar is Sarah's housemaid. Otherwise, Hagar a slave, a slave. And if Hagar has a child, the child is a? A slave. Right? So, all when the father free, him still a slave. I saw the principle set up. A child that is born into the household of a slave is a slave. Sarah is a free woman. But fit Sarah have a problem. She old and she not have no children. But God promised her, she shall be mother of a, of a great nation. I want you to understand, understand, make a backup back to, 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 to. My Bible keep, my, my verse keep moving. My Bible keep moving. I want to back up a little bit. Chapter four, verse four. And when the fullness of time was come, God sent his son, made of a woman, made under the law, to redeem them that were under the law, that they might receive the adoption of son. I want you to keep that scripture in the back of your mind as, as, as I go through this, my summary. And so Hagar has this child. And at the time when egg, when, when Ishmael was born, Abraham was eighty-six years old. Then biological clock slowed down a long time. Sarah won't stop tick, long time. And therefore, anything come out from Sarah and Abraham was not born out of flesh. It was born out of the spirit of God himself. And it never come, when everyone was eighty-six, it came when him was ninety-nine. That God makes sure it's very dead. So make sure that say you understand that when God, when, 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 when Paul draw for them two, them two ladies here. He's saying to you, listen to me. One is of the spirit and the next one come out of the flesh. It was, it, it was all flesh mean, it mean, is, is, is thereby saying, when we think that God is not coming forth. And, and, and I like, I like, oh, 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 um, Isaiah says, they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength, they shall mount up in wings as eagle. I tell you something about waiting. Waiting depends on where you are, is a hard thing. You ever await at a bus stop and rain and fall and you have a bag on your back? Me, me, me have to draw for some wicked Jamaican scenario. Wait is a difficult situation. You, you start to move from one leg to the next leg, you start to go in there, and if night ever start to come down, you start. You, you start to move from one leg to the next leg, you start to go in there and if night ever start to come down, you start. And then Sarah and, and Abraham would have been waiting on this promise because, and they waited on the promise before Ishmael, you know? So that is why when them decide say, them waiting on this promise and it, and it taking long to come, they say, alright, make a help out God. Call God make a promise and he need help. So flesh step in. Every time we want to do something. That. Comes to assist in God, we must remember these two women. Every time we think of, of doing. Anything in church, in Christianity or walk with God, remember these two women. One was of the flesh, the other one was of the promise, they say. What I have called it, one was of the flesh and the other one was of the spirit. The promised child, and, and, and you, and you can hear about it, you can read about it in, 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 in chapter sixteen. After, after, after Isaac was born, Ishmael decide to, to harass. Mock, jeer. The promised child. And, 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 and as we spoke about, the, the people who are always criticizing your spiritual work. Because you might not worship enough certain day or do certain things or you might, you, you're not baptized in Jesus, well. You were, you were baptized in a form, what they call it, they say it's not a, it's not a name, it's a, it's a formula. Right? So you're baptized in a formula, so those, those, those people and, 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 and so they have, you have trappings, you have all sorts of things, so. Ishmael decide to mock. So the bond servant decide to mock, mock the here. The real son. Because although he is born of Abraham, he's not the promised child. He's born on the, he, he was a slave still, so here comes the free son. So that is why. Paul has resorted to show you these two women, to ensure that we understand that Abraham had two sons. One with a bond woman, the other with a free woman. One was born. Because. Human intervention, the other one was born because God himself stepped into the situation. So, so Paul want to bring them to that place where they understand that you are born of the promise. Because you did not come about by flesh to birth, you never, you never inherited, first thing, you're not even drew. You never come into this relationship because you are born into the household, you are promised. The promise of salvation. So you are, you, 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 you come into this relationship through the promise, you didn't come in through the relationship because of birthright, so to speak. Not only because you were, because if you're born, if you're of the flesh, you came in there, you still be under the law. I, I look at this comment, um, this, this commentator. His name is W- Worsby, he said, legalism does not mean a sitting, setting of spiritual standard. It means worshiping tho-, these standards and thinking that they are the spiritual because we obey them. You know, legalism does not mean setting of the standard, but it's worshiping the standard which was set is the problem. It also judge other believers based on those standards. That's what legalism mean, that means when you're born according to flesh, you're, you're willing for God be judgmental against other people. And against other, uh, against every religion you can find. That is why me never criticize the Jesus only people then, cause them, them, them lack basic, they lack some understanding, but them said Jesus. And it says, behold, they, um, they use the scripture that says, um, behold, the Lord thy God is one God. So me no bother with them because the word Cecil, so they not understand the Trinity, but me, that is their shortfall, me not quarrel with them. There's a place for them too, alright? So me not getting to religious quarrel, neither the Adventists them, as long as they leave me alone, me leave them alone. Born, being born of a free, the free, the free woman, you see, is the miracle work of God. So salvation come to us through a miracle. Not because you are born in the renals household, renals children, don't mean that you're a Christian. It comes to you by salvation, come is an individual thing, is a miracle that takes place in your life when you receive Jesus Christ. It's not because, um. Um, you were born into a household and I, I. John Wesley, yes, that's the right man. John Wesley, I said, John Wesley had an active ministry, right? Because his father was a preacher, so he had an active ministry in prison everywhere and every day, everywhere, doing everything. He wasn't a Christian, he was just doing it because him consume father do it. Finally, he met, he met Jesus for himself. Because him was just going through to them face longer like do it because of a duty and can you imagine someday and get up and you know feel like going away. And he nah going away because him, him, him just do it because that's something father expect of him and they come in, they expect it of him. And everybody expect it of him because he was the father-son and then he met Jesus. Then all that he was doing becomes joyous. All that he did, because he become free, because it's only Jesus makes you free. Real freedom come from knowing Jesus Christ. Miracle of Christian life is that when you come to meet Jesus, right? The symbolism of, of the two things, the, the, the Jerusalem in Arabia and the Jerusalem, um, in Jerusalem as it is. So the Jerusalem in Arabia is a place of salvation, Jerusalem in Jerusalem at the time was still a place of bondage. But the new Jerusalem was a place of freedom. Because the, 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 the people in Arabia were under different kind of bondage. And then from the one that, that, than the people in Jerusalem, the people in Arabia was under the bondage of, of, of sin, not knowing anything about the father. Been far from the father, although is, they, they are sons of Abraham, so to speak. But the children in, in Jerusalem was still sons of Abraham, although they are Jews, but them still under the bondage of the law. So there, there is two different kind of bondage. But the chi-, when you, when you understand and embrace that you are children of promise, because guess why? Though you are not born into that direct household, you're still free because God makes you free. It is the Holy Spirit. It is the Holy Spirit that bears witness, it is the Holy Spirit that actually make free because as I said before, um, Jesus said, Jesus said to Nicodemus. You must be born again. Because being born of the flesh is not, is, 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 is not the relevant thing, being born of the spirit is the relevant thing. So the covenant of bondage and the covenant of freedom. Jerusalem above is free, it says. And Sarah is the mother of us all. So because she's the mother of us all. We can come into that spiritual relationship, it's a miracle she had a child. She was long past the stage of having children. But it's a miracle she had a child, so that tells you that this child came through by the spirit of God. Therefore, brothers and sisters, we have to rejoice as, as the word of God says, rejoice, O barren women, who do not bear. For everyone that is born. Is a miracle by God. God has performed a miracle in all of us life as Christians, we need to understand and embrace it. Don't allow the, the, the legalism to enslave us. Let us embrace the, the allegory, the allegory of Sarah being our mother. So we can, we can stop boast about Abraham is our father and start, start about Sarah is our mother. Because the miracle of God, of salvation can come through this woman who never, who was beyond having a child. So even when you think your circumstance is so bad, as a, as a sinner. God is able to put life, breathe life into your situation. And those are my many words, um, anybody online have any question? Anybody in house have any question? Any comment? Any question, any comment? Anybody have any question, Krista?
Yes, anything that's still trouble. Something that I actually shared today, um, Sister Doreen and, and, and Rev in the Christian Education Committee. Um, and based on what Sir Guyman was asking about, you know, what was happening with the, with the persons in, in Galatians at the time and how Paul was hurt and how they held up the law, focused on the law. But not so much, you know, grace, you know, and acting out Christ-like as how they should. We were discussing over a period of time how the, these, these, these countries are creating some laws that are just unrealistic and not logical, just crazy. And I mean, I always, we know of, of, of the scripture that talks about the last days. And I, I went to find them, um, in second Timothy three and second Timothy four. But this, this the part that I didn't, I, I didn't realize at first. You have the list of things that it says, we should understand, all these things will happen in the last days. I mean, persons are lovers of themselves, narcissistic and they're boastful and they're ungrateful, profane. Um, and you know, the list, you know, but this part is the part that got me. They hold a form of religion, right? Although they have denied its power, right? For their conduct nullifies their claim of faith. And, and this is what, um, is written that will come. And you see, aspects of it was happening, Paul was seen, you know, and very concerned that they were behaving that way from that time. And then here comes now in Timothy, that we should understand that in the last days, this is going to be the character of many persons around us. And God actually gives us, um, instruction on what to do. He say, avoid such persons. Move, keep far away from them and look at the reason. For among them are those who worm their way into homes and captivate morally weak and spiritually dwarfed. So the part about the spirit that you mentioned, minister, if we not built on the spirit, then the persons like, um, Ishmael. They are uncertain, they are insecure, so they are going to worm their ways into our lives. If we are not strong Christians standing in the spirit. And I'm like, look at that, that was happening then and Paul had the concern. And then it is, it is written that this is going to be the character of people in the last days.
Thank you, Sister Money. Um, what I think that I, 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 you know, you said just, just gross gone and what I think that I, I thought about. As a young child, I remember Good Friday morning pastor, I mean, I don't know if nobody else know about it, but. Um, I'm, I'm, I can tell you that the Lord has moved me so far to where I am, that I can talk about the things that I experienced as a child. What I think that I knew as a child was you wake up Friday morning and before sunrise, then put a, um, a head white in a, in a glass. Anybody know about that tradition there? Okay. You know, something I had to think about, is, is that the Holy Spirit just flash it back to me, um, on, on Good Friday when me reach home? I say, you've moved so far. Because me used to look forward to see what kind of foolishness have appeared and what the interpretation of it, you know, used to look forward to see. And, 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 and me say we go from household to household to fast, now who for, who for, who for glass and what in the glass? Not that I had, that I me laid out any glass for myself, but I'm trying to say, sometimes when God move we from flesh to spirit. We get a understanding of where he has moved us to because of the, the, with the things we are now, we can laugh at. Or we can shake up because I think them people are seriously believing in it. So that's all, I, I'm, by the way, is a Christian, Christian, also when me grow up in there, Christian people they may talk about. So, so you, you understand what I'm talking about? But I am saying to us, they never had any basis for that, but them, them believe in it. And so they can imagine some people have a little bit of basis for something and how they run away with it. So that's what's happening to Galatians them, them get a little bit of basis for the religiosity, their religiosity. And so they were running away with it. So this is where we end tonight and I hope that all the persons at home are doing well and I pray that you will continue to read your Bible. We read, we read the next two chapters because last year. Our brother Pedro did walking on the word, walking in faith and it came out of Galatians. So we are going to go into that, but I will not go detail, detail, I pray as well. I allow the spirit to tell me how detail to go, yes. And if I don't finish Galatians, get to Galatians six, you'll hear when we'll finish Galatians six, alright? The Lord bless you tonight as we dismissing prayers, let us pray. Bow your head with me. Father, we thank you for those who are online, we thank you, Father, that they were able to join, we pray God that the word was food. I pray God, even now, mighty God, that has we here, who are in this house, heavenly Father, we're prepared to leave here, mighty God. I pray that God, that you for, you go with us, that you cover us on our journey, mighty God, we thank you for every person here. We pray in the name of Jesus that you just touch our hearts, heavenly Father, and cause your word to resonate with us, heavenly Father. We pray God that we, we, our people have an appetite for your word. Heavenly Father, that we pray God that you open their appetites, heavenly Father, that indeed, mighty God, when they begin to look at your word, heavenly Father, they will be more curious as to what next, mighty God. And so God, they will do all the research, they will follow all the leads, heavenly Father, and by your spirit, heavenly Father, you bring them to the truth. God, we pray that the truth will resonate in their spirit. We pray God that they will grow, grow, heavenly Father, and grow. And mighty God, we pray that, heavenly Father, that you will indeed cast us afire, that mighty God, that each one will cheer each one along, mighty God. That there will unity and there will love and there will peace and there will joy in serving you, mighty God. We pray God that every person, heavenly Father, will understand that they are free, heavenly Father, and because they are free, they are free to set other people free. And so God, we pray God that the spirit of evangelism will rise up in our congregation. Mighty God, that each, every one of us will tell somebody, it is so good to serve the Lord. And indeed, heavenly Father, freedom has come and the joy of the Lord is our strength. And so mighty God, we will indeed run with you, mighty God, and we pray your blessing over everyone, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Lord bless the offering, we pray.